Good evening. Welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for March 20th, 2023. Can I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss custodial and nurses collective bargaining agreements and student matters made exempt under federal law and the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you. Can I have a motion to go back into public session?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Good evening. Welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for March 20th, 2023. Would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for our armed forces and those in our community that have lost loved ones, especially the grandmother of Victoria Bisbucci and the mother of Tom Dunning's.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our own, in its book of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Honored. Thank you for your patience. I'm sorry that we were late coming out of executive session. We're going to start with public comment number one. If that, did anybody sign up? No? Okay, so we're going to move right on to student recognition. Ron?
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'm just going to make my way to the podium and present from there. So about five years ago, we started a middle school First Lego League team. And we started this team knowing that we were a public school team. I'm sorry that I have my back to my students. I'll move the podium a little over so that I can address our students as well. We started our team as a public school team, knowing that we would be competing against teams that had collections of talent from various communities who were hand-selected. And it always makes for a challenge when a public school team competes against some of the teams that are community-based teams or private teams. We accept everyone on our team. Anyone who comes out for our team is welcome to join and participate, and there's a role for everyone. Well, back in 2018, when we first envisioned this program, I never envisioned the accomplishments that the 2022-2023 Mildred E. Strang Middle School First Lego League Legends would achieve. And that's the title that they go by, Legends. And their performance this year has been nothing short of legendary. Our students have accomplished something that no other First Lego League team before them has done. They participated in a competition right here in this very room, and they performed at a level that made us so proud. And not only did they make us proud, they were the top-performing team of the 12 teams that entered this competition. And that qualified them for a regional tournament. And at that regional tournament, they once again qualified for the next round. And our students have continued to amaze me. The robots that they design, and just for any members of our viewing audience who may not be familiar with the First Lego League team, it's more than just assembling Legos. And I think our students will attest to that. There are various tasks that the robot needs to accomplish, and the tasks are not trivial. They're actually quite complex. And the students code the robots to follow a pattern and make a series of moves and maneuvers until the task is completed. They have about three minutes or so to do that. And in addition to their robot design, they come up with an innovative idea, and they present that innovative idea. The idea of the Legends was one that I've never heard of. I thought it was brilliant. It was a cellphone charger in one's insoles of their shoes or sneakers. You would charge your phone through an insole just by taking the steps that you normally would. I thought their vision was extraordinary and innovative. And many of the judges who participated in the event that we hosted on January 21 remarked how impressive the Mildred E. Strang Middle School Legends were in their performance. I served as a practice judge to them prior to the competition. And when I walked out, and I told the team, and I think they'll remember this, "You guys did really well." I think that was a direct quote. I knew that this team was destined to do some wonderful things, and they have. And they have really, really shined a positive light on our school district, on our community. And I just want to, with regard to the community, I just want to take a moment to say thanks to the members of our community who supported the First Lego League event here. Yorktown has such a wonderful First Lego League community within our community, and they're just so supportive, volunteering hours to be at the event, judging competitions, practice judging, doing just anything and everything to provide the support to our students, and we appreciate that. I want to take a moment to acknowledge Mrs. Horowitz. She has been an absolute champion for this program and has been so supportive of the program. And I also want to take a moment to acknowledge the advisor of the club, of the team, Mr. Latka. Mr. Latka stepped up. Mr. Latka stepped up. We needed someone to take on this advisorship. Mr. Latka volunteered to do this, stepped up to do this. And can I tell you, at both competitions, he was voted the coach of the tournament. So he won that recognition this year, not just once here, but also at the other qualifier, the regional qualifier. So at this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Latka to the podium to address the board and to address our community.
Thank you very much for that kind words. But Dr. Hader, thank you, and board, thank you for having us here tonight. I really, it summed up everything perfectly. So I'm just going to really just announce the team. But one thing that I just want to make sure before we even get, is there's another very important person here, our other coach, Cheryl Goldberg, who has been a vital part of this success of the team. But now, the team, our team, like Dr. Hader said, consists of everyone in the middle school, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. And we are well-rounded, so I'll start right now. I have them right now. Sid Shinoi, seventh grader. Come on up. Sart Desai, an eighth grader. Anthony Gade, sixth grader.
Hold on four seconds. Do you go second, Andy?
Oh, you're calling more.
Yes, sir. So you called, sorry?
Anthony. Andrew James, seventh grader.
Hold on four seconds. Did we call Anthony?
Yes, we did call Anthony. Samira Kavanaugh, eighth grader.
Lila?
Lila Kelly, sixth grader. Maria Lucy, eighth grader, seventh grader, excuse me. Savannah Lucy, sixth grader. Daya Ravi, eighth grader. And Abhi Rav, I always, I'm.
Ravindran.
Ravindran. I always have a tough time. I think I got everybody?
So we'll get together and do a photo, a team photo?
A team photo would be great.
Brian will fix the photo. Last man behind you. It's over. You should be in the photo.
You want to come over here? You want to come over here?
Yeah.
All right. Over here, one, two, three. Thank you. Can you look at your parents' phones, then?
It's one more. Yes, please.
One last thing is, I'd like to present to board with some of our swag that we have handed out to our fellow competitors. So, guys, can you please bring it up? There's a little piece of paper explaining what it is. This is all made here in the middle school through our Glowforge, which is a laser cutter, and our 3D printer. So it's all designed here right through our school. Thank you very much.
We wish the Legends very well as they compete in the next level of their tournament at the Liberty Science Center in New Jersey. We know that they will represent Yorktown well and with pride and honor. And to our Board of Education, thank you for your investment in the program. There are so many programs and so many demands on whether it's budget or staff, and we certainly appreciate your support of this program because without your support, opportunities like this don't come to fruition. So thank you. And to the parents, thank you. It's not easy to sit there for hours upon hours as your children practice or as your children are competing, and we're just so delighted to have your support. And we certainly recognize all the time that you've invested in your children and in their activities and in all of the work that they do. So for the students here, whoever brought you here, you may want to give them a hug tonight and say thank you because your success is their success, and they are so proud of you, more than words can say. So congratulations to you. We wish you well at the end of May when you compete. I know you're going to do well. All right, congratulations. One more. And we have some other honorees this evening that we and the board would like to celebrate and acknowledge. There are so many wonderful things happening in our school district, and it's so wonderful to take the opportunity to publicly acknowledge some of the incredible achievements of our students. Before I begin, I just want to ask if Amani Gupta is here. I didn't see Amani. Okay, so we'll move on with Amani. We'll certainly invite her back. I do see Spencer Kitz in the audience, so I'd like to acknowledge Spencer Kitz, who's been named as a finalist in the 68th Annual National Merit Scholarship Program. This is no easy feat. For anyone who's familiar with the National Merit Program, what you'll know is that high school juniors enter the exam by taking the PSAT, National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. And nationwide, 1% of the people who take this test qualify to be semifinalists, and only a small subset of that qualify to be finalists. And an even smaller subset qualify to be recognized as National Merit Scholars. This is just a remarkable achievement for a remarkable student. If anyone has driven on this campus and has seen that beautiful Y in shrubs in front of the district office building, you can attribute that to Spencer's work. It's just absolutely phenomenal. So in addition to all of the extracurricular activities that Spencer is part of, he's also a very accomplished student. And his standing as a National Merit finalist is just further evidence of his outstanding academic achievements. So at this time, Spencer, I'd like to invite you to the podium and recognize you. so we certainly acknowledge him and will recognize him next week. Is Krishna Kuman in here? I don't see Krishna either. Okay. Then our final honoree of the evening is YHS senior Raka Bos. And I do see Raka here in the audience. Raka's artificial intelligence technology recently earned her a spot as one of the top 300 scholars in the 2023 Regeneron Science Talent Search. And for those who are not familiar with the Regeneron Science Talent Search, that is a prestigious research competition for high school seniors. So amongst a pool of about 2,000 students nationwide, only 300 are selected in the whole country. And one of our students has that recognition, and we're just so proud of Raka. Raka's project has garnered a great deal of notoriety and attention, and for good reason. Inspired by her own firsthand experience with hospital emergency room wait times, Raka developed her own, highly efficient and accurate patient triage system using artificial intelligence that serves to reduce patient wait time while also easing the burden on healthcare workers. Through a series of simple questions, Daisy, and that's the name of the chatbot that Raka selected, Daisy is able to provide a diagnosis and offer treatment options using a sophisticated decision matrix algorithm. Daisy is a complex chatbot and has already had real-world experience and real-world success as it's been deployed in a hospital ICU, where the bot categorized COVID and long-COVID cases and suggested treatment options. With this type of innovative technology, if you imagine going into a hospital emergency room and the amount of time the triage portion takes, even the most efficient hospitals and most well-staffed hospitals can't compete with the time that Daisy can do the same job. It's a matter of minutes as opposed to a matter of hours. Raka's project has also earned her an invitation to work with a group of scientists and doctors and the World Health Organization on its long-COVID research. That is remarkable for a high school student to be this accomplished and this published. As a high school senior, Raka moves on to college next year, and she plans to go into a science area and continue her research. And she really looks forward, we know, to pursuing that passion and to further developing Daisy. And so, Raka, I'd like to invite you to the podium to congratulate you. And these are just some of the great things that our students are doing. We've been featuring various students at meetings, some for athletics, some for service, some for science research, some for their extra-classroom activities, and we'll continue to do that. And I appreciate the board taking time out of your meetings to be able to recognize our students and share the great work happening with our community. So I thank you for that. To our students, we're always so proud of you. Keep up the great work. You impress us, you amaze us, and you inspire us every day. So keep doing what you're doing. We're proud of you. So I'll turn it over. If you have any questions or comments.
No, our students are so impressive. They always are. And it's so nice to start our meeting with students and their accomplishments because it always grounds us in the work that we have to do. It reminds us why we do what we do, and it's for this. So you guys are amazing, and thank you. And parents, you've raised wonderful kids, so we thank you all. We're good.
Yeah, I just want to say, it fills my heart with joy to see our middle school robotics team. I remember when we started the high school FRC team, and then the opportunity arose for us to host an FLL competition here at Yorktown. And Dr. Hader had just started here in the district with us. And, you know, it was just a casual chat, and I didn't know how much more he could take on. He had just come to us. I didn't want to scare him away. So, but he has been a passionate supporter for these programs, for the students. And I thank you, Dr. Hader. You know, we're very lucky for your support here, so thank you.
So with that said, unless there are additional comments, so with that said, we're going to continue on with the meeting. We're going to take just a brief, few-minute recess. I know you have homework. I know there are things that, bedtimes that we have to get ready for and so on. So we'll take a brief recess. If you choose to leave, you're welcome to do so at that time. If you choose to stay, you're in for two great budget presentations that we have and some additional presentations that we have. But if you choose to leave, have a great evening. Thank you again for coming out.
Okay. Ron, we're going to continue on with you and your superintendent's update?
Okay, all right. So we have two budget presentations this evening, and before we get there, I just want to give our community some updates on some matters that have been shared previously with the board. So one of the topics of a past discussion that we had had during one of our meetings is with regard to the tax exemptions that are newly formed, not just in this town but across communities across the state. We have been in communication with the town with regard to the tax exemptions for senior citizens, tax exemptions for veterans, tax exemptions for volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers. They, the town, is going to gather some additional information. There are income limitations, there's an application deadline with the town. Once they have an understanding of the number of residences that would be impacted by such an exemption, they'll share that information with us, and we'll certainly report back to the board. But I wanted to let our community know and certainly our board know that the administration is actively working on this, and we're following up, and we're working with the town to gather additional information. So in fact, many people may have gotten a mailer this weekend with regard to the various exemptions. Specifically, this one was for senior citizens. And just wanted to provide an update to our community that we're obviously aware of the matter and continuing to work on it and work with the town.
Just a quick thing. When we talk about exemptions, because I know it's a big topic, just because the state says you can offer exemptions, they don't give us the money that we offer. So when we offer an exemption to one group, it just.
Yeah, it gets redistributed across the rest of the tax base.
Right, so it's not like the state is helping. It's another unfunded mandate. Basically, the state is telling us, we have the opportunity to do it. It's not that we don't want to do it, but again, the state never offers money in advance of this stuff.
Yeah, so I think the first step here is to just understand what the impact would be, and I think that's where we are right now, is trying to understand what the impact would be. The town is gathering the information from residents, and once they have that, we'll work with the town to just better understand what the implications will be on the school tax portion before presenting anything further to the board. We just want to gather a little more information on our end. With regard to, we had talked about a new resident study, just to understand people who are moving into our communities with regard to number of children in the house, number of children who anticipate coming to the schools. We're working with our architects to understand, to better understand the capacity of our schools, and we're certainly working with demographers to better understand projections for enrollment and where enrollment ultimately will reside moving forward. So we have a good understanding, obviously, of the students who are already in the K-12 school system. Incoming kindergarten is always one of the variables that is challenging to predict, and then homes with children zero to four is also another challenge for us to predict. So we're going to be sending out a new resident survey, and new resident is defined by anyone who moved into the Yorktown Central School District catchment area on or after July of 2021. In addition, I just wanted to also make note that there is a volunteer application on our website for anyone who's interested in volunteering in our school district. What we're looking to do is create a central repository of volunteers so that it's all in one place for our school district. The platform that we're using is AppleTrack. We have a link, and we'll be putting up just a brief tutorial on how to access the AppleTrack system for volunteers. It's a very scaled-down version of our application, and that will be available on the homepage of our website, but also the homepage of each of our schools. The information that we're asking, once someone creates an account, is just address which vacancy they're looking to fill, in which school, some attestations to ensure that our policies and standards are met with regard to the supervision of students and conduct on school grounds, and emergency contact information is the information that we're seeking. So that is new. That's posted to our website, and we look forward to supporting any volunteers through that process. And we thank the volunteers and all their work in making our schools what they are. One of the best things about our school is we're so inclusive, and we have so many people who come in to assist our students and assist our teachers and staff in the work. And one example of that happened this past weekend during the Wizards game. We had the Harlem Wizards come in and play the Yorktown Central School District Superstars. I coached our team at the 2:00 and the 6:00 game. Unfortunately, I'm off 2-0-2 coaching start to my career, but I'll bounce back. There's always next year. So that, just a wonderful event to bring our community together. There were so many students there, and they were just so excited to cheer on their students. But this was an example where volunteers came together. Our district PTSA partnered with all of the PTAs and just really brought an amazing event to our community. It's a big undertaking to bring an event of this scale to our school community, and the volunteers were just absolutely tremendous. So we thank them. We thank all the PTAs, the district PTSA, SEPTA, all of the school PTAs for their efforts in making this come to fruition. And not only was it one game, but we were able to organize two games. So my thanks to our district PTSA and all of the PTAs in our school district. The last thing I'm just going to quickly share is if you're interested in coming to a Pioneer League game, we are moving to the basketball season now, which is really exciting for us. We have, the next game is scheduled for March 22nd, so it's Wednesday of this week. We're home. We have students from Peak Skill coming to play us, YHS, 4:00 p.m. There's no admission ever to attend a Pioneer League game, and it is one of the best sporting events you'll attend here in Yorktown. So one of my favorite events, and again, thank you to Mr. Rosen and his team for all their work in bringing this opportunity to our students. Lastly, and I know I said "lastly" before the last one, but there was one more that I missed. Kindergarten enrollment is ongoing. Please, if your child is kindergarten eligible and you plan to enroll your child in kindergarten, please do that sooner rather than later. The enrollment projections assist us during the budget development process. I'll be presenting my final budget to the board at next meeting, and then the board will take it, make it their own, and make any recommendations or changes, and then ultimately adoption in the coming month. But if you have a child who is eligible for kindergarten, please reach out to Patty Sauber, 914-243-8016. It's on the digital sign in front of the high school as you drive by. It'll be on our website, 914-243-8016. Please reach out to Patty Sauber. As I mentioned earlier, kindergarten enrollment is one of those unknown items in our enrollment, which subsequent, which impacts our budget and our planning. And that's a section, and it's not just one section. It's the CTA that goes in the kindergarten classroom. It's providing art, music, three sections of PE, library sections. The implications are great. It's more than just one class section. So if you have a child, please don't delay. Register them for kindergarten. The more information that we can have, the earlier, the better for us, so we appreciate your support in that. And if you don't have a kindergarten child, aged child, but your neighbor does, please let them know that they should register their child as soon as possible. So I thank you for the opportunity to share those updates with our community. I also will now move into the budget presentations. We have two budget presentations that we'll be delivering this evening. There was a budget presentation scheduled for last week. Unfortunately, we weren't able to meet, so we'll deliver that presentation, and then we'll deliver the next presentation. We intentionally kept the presentations separate because they are separate on our budget development calendar, which was adopted by the board earlier this year. And so as members of our community look to access the presentations, we wanted them to be standalone presentations just for ease of access after the fact. So with that, I'm going to turn the report over to Ms. Sanfilippo, who will present first on the athletics and co-curricular budget, and that then we'll certainly invite Mr. Barrett, Mr. DeGenaro, and Ms. Horowitz to the dais here to answer any questions that the board may have. And then we'll move into a presentation on instructional, instruction, general education. The implications are great. It's more than just one class section. So if you have a child, please don't delay. Register them for kindergarten. The more information that we can have, the earlier, the better for us. So we appreciate your support in that. And if you don't have a kindergarten child, aged child, but your neighbor does, please let them know that they should register their child as soon as possible. So I thank you for the opportunity to share those updates with our community. I also will now move into the budget presentations. We have two budget presentations that we'll be delivering this evening. There was a budget presentation scheduled for last week. Unfortunately, we weren't able to meet. So we'll deliver that presentation and then we'll deliver the next presentation. We intentionally kept the presentations separate because they are separate on our budget development calendar, which was adopted by the board earlier this year. And so as members of our community look to access the presentations, we wanted them to be standalone presentations, just for ease of access after the fact. So, with that, I'm going to turn the report over to Ms. Sanfilippo, who will present first on the athletics and co-curricular budget. And that, then we'll certainly invite Mr. Barrett, Mr. DeGeneres, and Ms. Horowitz to the dais here to answer any questions that the board may have. And then we'll move into a presentation on instructional, instruction, general education, special education, and technology. Ms. Sanfilippo, I turn it over to you.
Thank you. Yeah, she just got kicked out. Give her a minute.
Okay. Well, in the interim, I'm going to take the opportunity to just add one more item. All of the budget presentations are available on our website. So if you're not able to attend a meeting, we want you to come out to a meeting. But if you're not able to attend, please know that you can go to our website. Every presentation is there. The numbers, the, all of the information is very clearly and specifically laid out for our community. This is as upfront and as transparent of a process as can be. And the information is there for our community. And we encourage you, we invite you to access the information. You may email any questions that you have. We'd love to be able to clarify and answer those questions for you. But I just wanted to share that. I share that at every meeting and I wanted to share that tonight as well. So Ms. Sanfilippo, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Hatter. Tonight's presentation of the athletics and co-curricular budgets is the fourth in a series of six budget presentations. There will be two more presentations in addition to, in addition to the series of six, the budget adoption and the budget hearing, a total of nine sessions where the public can weigh in on the proposed budget before the budget vote on May 16. Tonight, we will begin with the budget for athletics. Our athletic director, Mr. Rob Barrett, is here tonight to answer any questions you may have at the conclusion of the presentation. The director of athletics has 77 employees in his department. The director also has supervisory responsibilities regarding the physical education teachers throughout the district K-12. The department includes the director, administrative assistant, and full-time athletic trainer, and 74 coaches that cover all three high school seasons. Here are the actual participation numbers for the 22-23 school year. Here's the breakdown of each sport by season. It ties in directly to the preceding chart. Note that every sport has three le, I'm sorry, note that not every sport has three levels, freshman, junior varsity, and varsity. In fact, most sports are limited to just the two levels of JV and varsity. Here's a summary of the fall sports season. The last column represents the cost of transportation, which, after coaching salaries, is the largest element of the cost of the athletics budget. Some of the budgeted costs, including transportation, attempt to capture estimated costs related to the postseason competition as well. Here's the same chart for our winter sports season. Three teams, the boys' ice hockey team, boys' swim and dive teams, and the gymnastics team have been merged with teams from neighboring districts due to decreased participation or derived deficiencies. Next is the spring season snapshot with anticipated participation. These numbers reflect the spring of 2022, the most recent information that we have available because the season just began for the spring. This chart is a summary of some of the Scholar-Athlete Awards for individuals and teams and individual athlete recognition awards. We are extremely proud that 364 of our Scholar-Athletes in 28 varsity teams have been recognized for Scholar-Athlete status. This is a summary of the budget-to-budget changes expected for next year. Please note that, as with most products manufactured and/or transported, costs are rising dramatically. The cost escalation can readily be seen in materials and supplies and uniform lines. We have reallocated the cost of transportation to a different area of the budget, so it is appearing as a $48,000 decrease, but actually, the athletics budget is increasing by approximately $185,000. We will discuss those cost drivers next. So for discussion and for consideration in next year's budget, we are presenting items that have been added to the budget presented so far tonight. We are proposing a strength and conditioning coach, who would also be a licensed athletic trainer, so that they could be used in that capacity as well. This would be offset by the overtime that we currently pay our full-time athletic trainer and the stipends that are paid for fitness center supervision. We are also proposing stipended seasonal coordinators, one per season. They would assist the athletic director with event supervision, game scheduling, and overall logistics. There have been, has been interest shown in boys' JV volleyball team and a girls' varsity flag football team. The addition of two new teams would require additional costs, such as coaches, transportation uniforms, equipment, and officials. Finally, we're considering adding assistant coaches for the varsity lacrosse teams to be consistent with other varsity teams. Next, we'll talk about co-curricular activities in the high school and the middle school. We have Mr. DeGeneres here from the high school and Ms. Horowitz from the middle school to provide context and answer any questions you may have after the presentation. Here's a summary of the various clubs offered to the students at the high school. In total, more than 1,300 students participate in these clubs. Students can participate in more than one club, so the number, 1,300, does not represent unique students, just aggregate participation. Here's the club summary at the middle school. Total participation in grades six through eight is roughly 500 students. The new clubs have been labeled. However, new clubs are not piloted here as they are in the high school. The supervisory dollars paid to teachers are reassigned each year to the clubs that are, in fact, active. Each budget season, we provide a list of new clubs running in the high school as of the current school year. The new clubs are run on a pilot basis with no stipends attached to them. If participation warrants, they may be run as a permanent club in subsequent years, but without increasing the overall amount of money spent on all of the clubs combined. These clubs, these are the clubs that were active in the previous year that are not running in the 22-23 school year. However, they may be reinstated in future years. They're just not running this year. The preliminary co-curricular budget hasn't changed that significantly. The increase is in equipment, representing sound and lighting upgrades for the performing arts. Overall, there is a 5.2% increase in the co-curricular budget. The superintendent will be presenting, as he mentioned, the total budget next week on March 27. The Board of Education will adopt the budget on April 10. And the vote will be on May 16. And in a few minutes, we'll have the instructional presentation. So if you have any questions?
At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Barrett, Ms. Horowitz, and Mr. DeGeneres to the front. So, board, or we may ask you clarifying questions on the budget presentation.
Lisa, thank you for that. Mike, do you have any questions you wanted to ask?
Well, I guess the, one of the largest items that we're looking at, Rob, is the, is the position of strength and conditioning coordinator or coach. I'm not sure what you're calling it, but can you describe that a little bit? And why we need it and how it'll be filled?
Sure. So actually, I would like to call that a health and performance specialist. The reason why I say that is we have more kids now than ever participating in each of the sports that we have, but also in the additional sports that we added since I've been here, which is a number of teams. And as we are still looking to increase more teams, there's just not enough hours in the day for our current athletic trainer to be able to cover all of our student athletes and all the events that are going on at any one given time. So the thought process was kind of killing two birds with one stone in the sense that if I'm going to look to increase adding an athletic trainer, then I would also like to find a way to enhance our students' performance in the strength and conditioning world. So that, there's kind of three parts to that. There's being proactive and trying to prevent injuries. Then there's the strength and conditioning piece, where you're gaining strength and flexibility and endurance and all of that kind of stuff. And then there's the post-injury piece, too. So if you have an athletic trainer who's dual-certified, which is what our hope would be, is we're able to cover, you know, have extra coverage at football games, have extra coverage at all of our activities and not just the ones that we deem maybe as the more contact sports versus the non-contact. Because as we know, injuries happen everywhere. So the point is, you know, as we see in the, in the world today, injuries are happening and they're becoming more and more prevalent because athletes are getting bigger and stronger. But at the same time, they're getting injured as well. And we want to be able to be there to take care of that in a cumulative kind of way. Not just be there when the moment of the injury, but be proactive, be supportive to get them bigger and stronger, and then there for the post-injury. So I think it's kind of a two-for-one kind of deal. And I think that it would make our athletic department just more, that much more solid.
Can I ask a follow-up then? So, as far as funding and where this comes from and what we're replacing, we, we do have in the budget now, right, three positions or stipends for strength training or, I don't know how you want to describe it. But is that replacing this? And then, I think, Lisa, you mentioned overtime for our trainer that we're paying. So how does this all wash out, I guess, is the way I'm looking at it?
So my thought is that, like, for instance, we have our school medical director at a football game on Friday night along with our athletic trainer. My thought is the model, in speaking with Justin Giuliano, our athletic trainer, the model that's better suited for our kids is two athletic trainers who are able to train and work, you know, with spinal mobilization, head injuries, those types of things. They're able to train. If they're working together on a regular basis, they're more prepared, in a sense, for those types of injuries. So that would replace some of what our medical director does. Justin, obviously, has a life outside of school. Sometimes he has a wedding to go to, a family event, something that pulls him away from work. We, you know, we're always scrambling to either get the school medical director or another trainer to cover, which is an additional, additional monies that we spend. And then, to your point, the after-school activity, where we have either a PE teacher or a teacher covering the weight room so that kids can go in there after school and do that strength and conditioning activity. This kind of replaces that, but at a, what I would say is at a higher level. You have, you have somebody who's specifically knowledgeable about the current activities that go on in strength and conditioning and is able to kind of also not only do that piece, but to make sure that the equipment is working, make sure that kids are, you know, putting away things like that. All the stuff that goes along with the weight room and the dangers of a weight room. So it just kind of gives somebody who's going to own that space and bring it to, you know, the hope is a better level, a higher level.
Richard?
I have two questions. So, the first one pertains to the increased number of coaches for next year. So is that, where's that coming from?
So, depending on if we have the teams that we'd like to get in. So some of that increase is new teams. So you have coaches like flag football. We would have a varsity coach, an assistant varsity coach, and then boys' JVs. So last year, numbers weren't quite enough to have a JV team, but it certainly looks like that's going to be the trend, so that having that JV team. If you remember, last year, a lot of schools didn't have a JV team. But a lot of the varsity teams that are out there now are starting to move towards having JV teams. So there was two pieces there. We were just starting. We didn't know if our numbers would warrant having two teams. But there was also really not a ton of competition out there for them. Now that's changed. You know, there looks like there's going to be enough competition. And we look like we're going to have enough kids to support both programs. Flag football is the new trend. Teams are multiplying quickly. And part of me was a little cautious. I wanted to see how it would impact all of the things that go on athletics, but also to see if there was real interest. And there seems to be real interest now at this point. So that would be an increase. In terms of the boys' and girls' lacrosse coaches, it's similar. If you're, if you know football at all, it's kind of the offensive coordinator, defense coordinator, and the coach. That sport in itself is becoming more specialized in those areas. So having that third coach, which really would be offense coordinator, defense coordinator, head coach, seems to make sense at this point for those sports. I'd say other schools are doing it, but they are. You know, and it just, it keeps us in line with those other places as well. It gives our kids the most benefit.
Great. So my, thank you, Rob. So my next question is about the transportation. So I know the last meeting, when we looked at transportation, that we had reduced about 325,000 out of that and said that it would be allocated here. But then here, I think we put back about 233,000. So that other 100,000, where did that go? Does it, are we actually reducing the transportation budget? Or where did that kind of, where's that?
So I think it's actually the other way. We took 200,000 out of athletics and put 300,000 into transportation. So the cost of transportation, obviously, is rising for next year. There's also more, more games, more events that we're transporting to. We have a new contract compared to pre-COVID, when we were with them, a different contractor, a different pricing structure with them. So the cost for athletic transportation has increased compared to where it was or where it was budgeted for in the prior year.
I see. I see. So we're actually projecting expenses to go up for this? Yeah, that makes sense. Alright, thanks.
Sure.
Okay, Mr. DeGeneres, Ms. Horowitz, I'm going to give you a little airtime at this point. We don't want to leave you out down there. Can you talk a little bit more about the co-curriculars? As far as how they're evaluated this year, whether, how they continue based on your evaluation, what you take a look at, I'm assuming it would be numbers. But how someone goes about creating a new club, if it's, I don't know if the process is the same in both schools. It sounds like it might be different. And how that all works, as far as meeting all of our children, our students' needs? And do they approach you? Do you have teachers approach you? How does that all work? And how do we establish, you know, the co-curriculars from year to year?
In the middle school, there is no need to run a program before they're paid. Our units are reallocated. Our programs are usually teacher-led, but we also have student interest. For example, our Dungeons and Dragons started because of student interest. And we actually get assistance from the high school students who come down to coach the team. So it's really, that's one of our biggest successes, the Dungeons and Dragons.
Similar and different for the high school. Ours are really student-led. The clubs that you see on the slide that are piloted, we'll look at those to have sustainability. A lot of times, those stem from our grade-level assemblies at the beginning of the year. Typically, ninth, 10th, and 11th graders who are going to be back the following year or two to kind of get the club in motion. We continually look at numbers. We look at numbers mid-year. We look at numbers end of year. And what I do in the summer is kind of evaluate, where do we get the best, you know, bang for the buck, so to speak, in terms of how many kids are participating. But all of our clubs and the message we always give to them are all student-led. They'll come by way of our grade-level assemblies at the beginning of the year. They can come to me at any point. They sit down and talk about the process. Once they have an interest, clearly, the goal is then to find an adult in the building. Our faculty is wonderful about volunteering, even for piloted programs. So it's really kind of a work, a constant work in motion, so to speak. One of the things I'm really happy about there, if you looked at the numbers of the clubs that we lost versus the clubs that we're piloting this year, our numbers are up this year. They had been down the last few years for, you know, different reasons. So I'm real excited about taking a look at that. We might merge a couple of clubs that have very similar mission statements. That's always a possibility as well. So we look at them continually. But I always tell the students, if there's an interest, we'll find a way to make it happen.
And somehow you work it within your budget every year?
Every year, we look at...
An allotted budget for that, so it all stays within a certain budget?
Absolutely. I, I've never come to you looking for more units or... So we move the units around every year. I don't think I give too many back either. But we do look to move them around and make sure that, you know, we look at the level of commitment of clubs, too. There's different levels. There's some that meet, you know, regularly, weekly. There's some that meet monthly. So we take that into consideration in terms of how we allocate the units. We also have a committee at the building that looks at that continually.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Lisa?
Hi. I have a couple of questions. So, Mr. Barrett, the increase in the budget is, is kind of significant for the athletic department. So I just wanted to get a handle on what we're talking about. You mentioned, let's say, lacrosse or football. They have three coaches. There's an athletic trainer. There's you. What, what do the seasonal coordinators and the strength and conditioning coach add that all of those employees can add?
I think it goes back to, to what I said earlier in terms of, we're just growing, right? We're adding so many more teams, so... right? We're adding so many more teams. So there's just only so many eyes that you can put on an event or when there's multiple events going on, there's just, you're limited unfortunately, and you're really triaging where you need to be, you know? And parents often ask me, they'll say, how come you don't spend as much time at swimming as you do at boys soccer? And my answer is very simple to them is where's most likely something going to happen? And they'll, and they go, oh yeah, the soccer game because it's a little more contact, you know, more, more fans per se. So it, I would love to be able to spend more time going to see swimming and tennis, but there are events where things very, very seldom, if ever, happen. So I check in, make sure everything's okay, and then I race back to, to the soccer field or the football field or on the basketball court, depending on what, what the event is. So, so I think that's the big piece is that there's going to be more eyes there to, to help our kids. It's going to service them better. The athletic trainer, same thing. It's just going to be another person that can take on a role in helping a child in a different way, a student athlete in a different way. One, like I said, helping them with their strength and conditioning, preventative injuries, pro injuries when they happen after the fact, how we can take care of them and get them back on the field faster. So there's a variety of reasons, but the real reason is just we're going to be able to provide better service.
Yes. And that's just, just the one piece I want to add because that's a really valid question when we toss around the idea of adding the positions. The seasonal coordinators come with a very modest cost or addition to the budget. It's actually quite modest and actually the net cost of the athletic strength and conditioner, strength and conditioning coach is also modest once the offsets are factored in. And for me, the reason why it's an item to consider, and nothing's finalized, obviously, it's an item to consider, is we look at the level of service that we want to provide to our community. And right now, Rob's doing a tremendous job, but Rob's one limitation is he's one person and he can be in one place at one time. And I just continually ask myself at all aspects of our organization, can we do better? Can we be better here? Can we deliver better service to our students, to their families? The athletic trainer's on the field, which means he's not rehabbing an injury. Or the athletic trainer, this spring, right now, we will have on any one given afternoon, a softball game happening, a lacrosse game happening, a baseball game happening. Lacrosse is either boys or girls, but there would be three different events happening. And those are sports where injuries are not uncommon and there's one trainer to get around. And is that the level of service that we want to provide to our students or can we do better? And that's a question that I continuously ask ourselves. And you'll see that in various aspects of the budget presentations, just that question of can we do better? And I do believe that we can do better with a modest budgetary impact by just investigating these two positions, one stipend at one, more of a full-time position. But that, for me, that's what it came down to is the level of service that we provide to our students, to our families. Are we able to be proactive as opposed to reactive? Our current model limits our ability to be proactive in truth because athletics has grown, the number of teams that we've offered has grown, the nature of the injuries have become more complex, the rehabilitation of the injuries has become more complex. And just the question that I ask is, is can we do better? And that's kind of where we are right now.
So if I could just follow, what, on a day-to-day basis, will a seasonal coordinator do? Like what's the role there?
So it's, it could be a variety of things. It's, I think a little bit's going to be shaped by who the person is and what their strengths are basically. So it could be helping with scheduling. It could be event supervision. It could be assigning event supervision, you know? And when I say event supervision, that ranges from who's running the scoreboards, who's, who's running the computer, you know, now that we have all these digital display boards. So there's additional people that are working games in a sense. So they could help with that. They could help with, you know, it just, it's really endless how many things they can help with. You know, there's oftentimes in the afternoon where that's where parents who really want to see me can see me. So they could be covering something where I can meet with a parent and, and be able to help them with their, whatever issue it is that they may have. It's also an opportunity where I could sit with a coach either in the current season or the season coming up and be able to sit down and give them the time that they want in preparation, preparation of their season while they're covering something that I could be doing or that I would normally be doing, I should say, on whatever field it is or whatever activity is going on. So there's, I think it's going to be a little bit about the strength of the person that I, is applying for that position.
And is it, is it one person per season is what you're looking for or?
So I think we, we've kind of said it could be one person for each season, but I personally would love to have one person do all three seasons just because of the continuity piece, the expectations, the understanding, the relationship piece, like I'll be able to do this, you do this, and we can kind of assign some things to each other, to him and, and that helps me in a sense. So that's, that's the thought process is that if I could find somebody that is available for all three, I would do that. But obviously it gives me a little flexibility if we can't find somebody.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask a question first or you want, are you going to follow up?
I want to follow up with Ron's comment about the medical need and coverage. If I understood correctly before, it's not that we're not providing coverage necessarily, but this would allow us to maybe not use our medical director in that role.
Correct. Yes.
And use somebody who's maybe more familiar with our student athletes and sees them on a daily basis and would be there, you know, in the event that they were needed or to help them condition or recover.
Yep. And then there's the communication piece between those two people, right? They're, you know, basically in the same office in a sense. They can share, you know, I'm not going to be here tomorrow because I have whatever, but please follow up with Sarah. Her left ankle is ABC. You know, there's going to be that kind of continuity, which is going to, again, provide a better support for our student athletes.
So in a perfect world, we would give you everything you want, even though I joke with you all the time. But if you had to give these a number, one through four, one being the most important, how would you rank the, the four options that you've asked us to add into the budget for you?
So I'll answer that by saying whatever's going to impact kids the best. So, you know, it all depends, right? Obviously adding teams is always a bonus to, to kids, right? So I'll give you, for example, we were able to add the boys volleyball. I looked at 16 or 18 kids that were on the volleyball team and, and I asked, you know, somebody, I said, do any of those kids play a different fall sport last year? And the answer was no. So I thought to myself, wow, we impacted the fall season in a positive way without, you know, impacting other sports. So if we can add flag football and boys JV volleyball and that's a positive, then great. I'm going to say yes, that would be awesome to do because it's impacting kids and that's what we want to do. Strength and conditioning, I think, also impacts kids in a different way with the athletic training piece and the strength and conditioning has the, has the ability to impact a lot of kids because of each of the seasons, all the sports, they would all go to this particular person for the strength and conditioning piece. Many more kids could be seen from the, from the health piece. So that's the nice piece. And then of course, the last would be the seasonal coordinator only because that doesn't impact, in my eyes, kids as much as the other three do.
Well, yes, but two assistant coaches too. That was on your list too.
Sorry. Yes. So that would be three. So that would be three and seasonal coordinator would be four, if you're, if you're asking me. You know, Ron might have a different argument.
Yeah, I did, what I just, what I just noticed was you put your workload at the bottom of the list. I just noticed that. You had to add all this extra stuff, but your workload gets more and you put yourself at the bottom. I noticed that.
Yeah, but that's what we're here for, right? It's, it's about kids. So if we can, if we can give them more, then, then I'm happy to do that. So.
I appreciate it. No, go ahead.
So just a follow-up to that, as far as impacting kids. So a strength and conditioning coach per se, would they, would they potentially work with students who maybe aren't athletes but want to work out and learn, you know, different exercises or strength training?
Absolutely. So we're replacing that after-school activity, right, with, where we had a seasonal person in the, in the weight room. So the idea is we don't want to eliminate that piece, but we want to do it just better, you know, like, so kids will have actually more opportunity because they won't be limited by the time that, that 2:30 to 3:30 spot or whatever time that the weight room is open, they actually might be able to come in later if that, that suits them. If the trainer, you know, will put out a schedule, trainer will be there, they'll be working with teams, but they'll also be able to come in. So it kind of actually enhances the student or athlete or student, I should say, that is looking to just come in and get bigger and stronger and, and kind of work out.
I, I have a question kind of following up to what you said and then Mike's question. So is the role of the conditioning coach to, like more of an injury response or is it more like the person's there if the students want to avail of him or her? Like what is that?
I envisioned that person working with individual teams as they go. And then they're, so when they're working with that team, they're, they're going to meet with the coach and they're going to talk about what they want to, the outcomes to be, right? So we want to be more agile. We want to be bigger and stronger. Whatever the case may be, each sport has its own kind of little nuances. Football, you want to be big and strong, right? Whereas maybe boys lacrosse or girls lacrosse, you want to be more agile and be able to move in, you know, in different directions very quickly. So they would work with the individual coaches, look for what those outcomes would be, and then maybe basically assess those students where they began at the beginning, right? So they're, you know, think about it as, as a third grade teacher. They come in, they find their reading level at the beginning of the year, and then they work all the way through the year, and then they assess them maybe mid-year, see where their reading level is at that point, and then reassess them at the end of the year to see if there's growth, right, at each of those levels. Same thing with athletes. They're going to come in, they're going to meet with this person, they're going to assess where they are at the beginning, and then reassess them throughout the year, trying to meet the goals that they're trying to meet with, with their individual teams. While they're doing that, they're also providing additional coverage for sporting events that we deem are bigger events. So they're able to kind of work on their schedules in there because not every team is going to be in there at every minute of every day. But we want them to be there as often as possible. And then we also want to be able to cover all the events that we have going on at one time. Like Dr. Adder said, we're going to have three, maybe four events going on. He didn't, he didn't mention the tennis match that's going on up at the tennis courts, you know, and the practice that's going on in the 202 field while those three events are going on. And that's where that person can kind of has a group, then go out and check on some of those sports while the other one is maybe on the sideline of a lacrosse game or the sideline of a baseball game or softball game. And they kind of coordinate with each other so that they're covering all of the bases.
So two, two more follow-up questions to that. So one is, so given what you just said, is it real estate that they're going to have time to work with non-athletes? How, how will that work?
Well, if the weight room's open, the weight room's open. So that, that's kind of my thought process, right? There'll be a schedule, you come. And what, how that usually works is there's, there's, you know, they have, they have an initial kind of evaluation with, with any particular person and then they're giving a workout. Most of the time those, they're paired up with a student and those students run off and then this person is working their way around. So there's an opportunity for, it's like a classroom teacher, same thing. They're all doing their work, but the classroom teacher's checking in with everybody, making sure that they're accomplishing what their goal is.
And how are we going to, and this is my last question, how are we going to evaluate how effective the conditioning coach is working out and, no pun intended, but how about that position is working out and also the, the seasonal coordinators? Like what, what is the basis for, it sounds like those jobs could evolve into, you know, depending on the person?
Yeah, no, I think that's great. You know, the proof is in the data is the way for, for the strength and conditioning coach and the athletic trainer, right? We're going to see how many kids that person is seeing, how, the assessments that those teams go through, beginning, middle, end, to see if there is growth in each of the, each of the student athletes, assuming that they're all coming regularly when they're supposed to, right? So there is measuring points that you can have with that particular position. The athletic coordinator, you know, I hadn't given that much thought, but certainly when we sit down and talk about the assignments that they have, we can look at the number of games that they covered, the number of, you know, maybe if they're doing scheduling, number of schedules that they completed. So there are, there is some data points for all, both of those positions that will kind of tell you if they're doing something or doing somewhere in the middle or anything, I guess. So, okay.
Sure. I'm, I'm good. Thank you.
Lisa?
Okay. I have two questions. I don't want to leave Mr. DeGeneres. I don't want to leave guys out. So the biggest item on the, on the budget for the co-curricular is the new sound and lighting equipment. Do you guys know what that's about? Can you tell us about it?
So I'm going to probably defer that one, but I think that's more, that's more into the auditorium piece of it. So.
Yeah. There's sound and lighting equipment in the auditorium that just needs to be upgraded for some of the perform, and not just the performances, but some of the assemblies that we have, the events that we have. The lighting can use a little bit of an upgrade.
Yeah. So that would, you know, that would be beneficial to ceremonies. I mean, we're not just talking about.
And that's why I corrected myself.
Right. The drama people, right? We're talking about, this really affects the entire student body.
And district-wide. Prampon has events at the high school. Middle school has events at the high school. So it's not just exclusive to one genre of the organization.
You know, the auditorium has stayed in pristine condition for 17 years now it's been since we did it. So we forget that some of that equipment is 15, 16, 17 years old and starting to get to the end of its useful life, even though the auditorium looks like we just did it yesterday. So.
And how are the advisors for the various clubs chosen at each school?
So at the middle school, teachers volunteer to do different clubs. And if there is a student interest, they approach a facilitator. They'll approach a teacher, asking the teacher, can you please facilitate the club for us? And the teachers are willing to help the students.
Similar for us. Students will approach a teacher that they might think has an interest or just a conversation or connection with. Very rarely will they not find an adult to do that, to start the pilot process. And, but if, in the rare case that that happens is they'll work with me. I'll put something out, my weekly email that goes out to teachers. If we have a faculty meeting, I might mention it right upfront. Might even have the students come to the meeting and talk about the mission of their club and the frequency to which it meets. So just, but it, it always works out. We've never not had something that a student had an interest in because we couldn't find an adult. Again, our teachers are wonderful about helping out.
All right. Thank you.
I think I've never, I don't remember seeing 15 piloted programs in one year. That's, that's a lot of clubs, along with your already existing clubs. So how are you going to reallocate your units?
So again, numbers will drive a lot at the end. And we'll look at clubs that we think that might have the same or similar missions, not the same, but similar, and maybe put those together under the same umbrella. So that's certainly one way. We'll look at, if, if it all comes down to, we'll look at the numbers. A lot of times as kids start clubs in the high school and as they phase out and graduate, sometimes the clubs go by the wayside for a year or two and we bring them back down the road. So we'll look at all of that and we'll take our end-of-year numbers and sit down over the summer and look at it, present it back to the students at the opening assemblies when we see them in September and we'll kind of go from there.
Okay.
It's a lot, it's the most we've had. Yep.
Yeah. It, it's nice to see because it's all student-run.
Go ahead.
I just want to clarify something. It ties into what Rashmi asked about the strength and conditioning position. It's not, I don't see it in the presentation, but I thought you mentioned that that person would need to be a licensed athletic trainer?
That's correct.
And that's the other component to this, right? It's a hybrid.
Right. It's a hybrid. Absolutely. So they have to be both athletic trainer and strength and conditioning.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
I have another question for Mr. Barrett. And excuse me, my system was down, so I'm just getting caught up again. So you may have mentioned this, but just for my own purpose, in case you did mention it. You talked about assistant coaches for boys and girls varsity lacrosse teams. We currently have those? What, are you adding to them?
Yes, it would be an additional assistant to each of those teams.
Additional one for each team, the varsity team.
Just because of the specific nature of the offensive, defense and stuff like that. So it's become more customized, you know, in their roles.
And just for the varsity teams?
Just for the varsity teams. Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thanks. I, I heard you talk something about it, but like I said, I was offline. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett, Mr. DeGeneres, Ms. Harwitz. At this time, we're going to transition to the next budget presentation for the evening, and that will encompass our quick, our instruction, general education, special education and technology budgets. So again, I will turn the podium over to Ms. Sam Filippo. However, the, there'll be a joint presentation for this next, for this next one.
Okay. Up next, this instruction and technology budget review is the fifth presentation in our six-part budget series with the following slides. Ms. Amerling, Mr. Rosen, Ms. Forsberg and I will present the entire instruction portion of the budget. So up first is curriculum and instruction.
So up first is curriculum and instruction. So I'll turn it over to dear.
Thank you, Ms. Sam Filippo. And thank you, Dr. Hatter, Ms. Carbone and board trustees for the time this evening to present the instruction portion of the budget for school year twenty-three, twenty-four. During this presentation, you will hear the instruction budget, which includes pupil personnel services and technology. We begin with an overview of the organizational chart for instruction as it reflects the team of approximately five hundred dedicated faculty and staff that work collaboratively to support our students. Last year, two positions, supervisor of humanities and supervisor of STEM were added to the budget. These positions have been instrumental in moving our K-12 curriculum and instructional priorities forward. Instructional staffing that we consider in the organization chart include the positions indicated here. They are our administrators, teachers, teaching assistants, related service providers, counselors, nurses, library media specialists and clerical positions. As part of the review process, we carefully evaluate the role of each individual to ensure that our students and programs are being served most effectively. The next slide is one that you have seen over the past six years as it represents the vision developed between Dr. Hatter and the administrative team when thinking about our work for Yorktown students. This district vision sets the path of clear expectations for planning for our students, our curriculum and our programs. Along with implementing comprehensive academic programs, we strive to build empathy, creativity and critical thinking and work to provide multiple opportunities for students to explore varied areas of interest. The next slide is also one that is included in many presentations as it represents the overarching goal in Yorktown, that is of educating the whole child. We know that all components of the K through twelve educational program are important and valued and they contribute to the overall experience for our students. Therefore, we continually look at providing enriching opportunities in all areas that include academics, social emotional learning, performing arts, fine arts, athletics, character education, non-athletic teams, clubs and community organizations. The goal of the curriculum department is to ensure that meaningful instructional programs are in place for all of our students. This work includes a carefully designed curriculum based on the New York State learning standards, the implementation of effective instructional strategies and assessment practices to help guide teaching and learning. A wide variety of programs and services are in place to serve the needs of our students and support the whole child philosophy. We continue to partner with BOSI's and Lyric as they provide valuable support to our work and in strengthening our programs. This slide represents an overview of the services that are being utilized this year and are included in the budget for continuation next year. As we continue to plan for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, there are key areas of priority to highlight. We will ensure that our curriculum is fully aligned with the New York State content area standards and follow all requisite implementation timelines. We commit to providing our teachers with curriculum resources and professional development opportunities to strengthen their work. Using the scope and sequence for each area, we will expand, develop and implement additional Esteam opportunities for students within our K-12 curriculum. We will continue to explore exciting and innovative electives at the high school. In addition to the two high school electives added last year, that of data science and civil engineering, we continue to work with the high school staff regarding new course proposals. We will continue planning for the implementation of the new computer science and digital fluency standards, which are required to be fully embedded by September twenty-two-four. And we will continue the development and implementation of a district-wide, multi-tiered system of support plan with the goal of supporting the academic, behavioral, social and emotional needs of our students. So I thank thank you for your time this evening. And now I would like to invite Mr. Rosen up to present the pupil personnel services portion of the budget.
Good evening. Uh thank you, Dr. Hatter, Ms. Carbone, Mr. Maniani and the board trustees for giving this opportunity to present the PPS budget tonight. Um the PPS department is responsible for following key provisions of the Individuals with Disabilities Act. In addition, we have child find and CSE responsibilities for students who attend local, private and parochial schools um within the boundaries of the Yorktown Central School District. Here is an organizational chart um for pupil personnel services. I am proud to be the director. And as I said before, we are lucky to have Caroline Almeida as the assistant director and Kelly Rudick as a supervisor of special special education supervisor. This is um one of our student count charts. In the past years, this chart has reflected the number of special education students from the October snapshot. Due to continued increase in special education enrollment, we have included the current number as of Friday, March seventeenth um for the current school year. As you can see, we have received thirty-seven new referrals um to the Committee on Preschool Special Education as of March seventeenth. The current number of school age students receiving services is six hundred and forty-eight. The PPS department has processed ninety-two CSE referrals through Friday. That is um fifty-one K to five and forty-one six to twelve. And I did receive one on Sunday around one o'clock, so we can add one more. Um it is important to emphasize that a major focus in this budget is based on the increase in the number of students receiving services and the level of programs and services that are required to support the students during their educational journey in the Yorktown Central School District. I wanted to make note of the fifty students that are currently out of district. Um eleven of those students moved to Yorktown with an IEP um that had a recommendation for an out-of-district program. So they came to us already in hand and needed to go out of district over the past few years. It is also important to share that we continue to identify incoming kindergarten students who require more intensive support than we can provide here in the Yorktown Central School District. The out-of-district number includes two preschool students over the last two years who ended up with an out-of-district program. And we anticipate two to three students for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year who will require an out-of-district program. This chart reflects the total number of school age students previously classified by their by their district who moved to Yorktown with an IEP in hand from the twenty twenty-one school year to the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. The total is sixty-five as of again Friday, March seventeenth. The total number of preschool students who moved in with an existing IEP in that timeframe was thirteen. We continue to see an increase in the number of preschool students eligible for services over the past few years. We currently have seventy-seven classified preschool students um receiving services who will have a transition to kindergarten with a burning turning five by December first. I'm guessing we'll have about two hundred and twenty-five total kindergarteners. So we're talking about a third of the incoming class receiving some type of service through the Committee on Preschool Special Education. Um last year, we had fifty-four who were receiving services. Twenty-eight of those students were referred to the Committee on Special Education for continued eligibility of the seventy-seven current. We expect forty to be classified to refer to the committee and classified for services in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Uh YCSD continues to meet the needs of our students through a comprehensive continuum of services. And you can see the support that we have up on the chart. This chart includes the number of special education classes that we have in place K to five. We anticipate adding an additional ABA eight-one-two class at Brookside for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. That will make three K-two classes um in the district. Last year, we had one, this year we have two, and we're gonna need to add a third for the next school year based on the incoming students. We're also looking to add a twelve-one-two special class at Mohansick that would split the kindergarten and first graders who are currently together. Again, due to the number of incoming kindergartners, we cannot keep that group together and need to split. We're also monitoring for an additional integrated co-talk classroom at in second grade at Mohansick and in the fourth grade at Crampon. So those are the contingency positions that you see on the board. This chart includes the number of special education classes that we have in place six to twelve. Due to the increase um in special education, we have included one contingency position at the middle school and one contingency position at the high school. This chart reflects the fifty students who I mentioned previously who are out of district. I share this information because if you've been in previous meetings, the number of locations that our students attending has increased, especially in other local public schools like Croton and Putnam Valley, North Salem. They've taken students, just like all the school districts nowadays. We are all helping each other because the numbers have grown. The budget has also been adjusted for students who age out um or return to the school district. We anticipate returning two out-of-district students, one to this building at the middle school and one to the high school who have been out of district for a couple of years, for a number of years. There was an increase of seven special education teachers during the current school year, the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, based on student need. We are currently monitoring our maximum capacity for certain programs and will require um additional personnel for next year. The budget for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year has taken into consideration the need to add the following positions. Additional teaching staff, speech therapist, social worker, board certified behavior analyst and certified teaching assistants. The priorities tend to um continue. Um we will continue to review all CSE procedures and ensure compliance with all state mandates as part of the and that's part of the eligibility process for special ed. The CSE reviews all RTI data, which can include building level interventions in the area of reading, math, speech, OT and social emotional support. When planning the special education programs, we consider future trends over a multi-year period. For example, based on the current trends in the area of social emotional functioning of our students, we continue to explore programs and supports um in all the buildings. Due to programs and services required for our students, additional integrated co-talk classes, special class programs and support services are required. We will continue to um annual initial and recertification training in the area of non-violent crisis intervention for our staff. And we're also started this year homicidal threat assessment training. Uh we completed that for staff grades six through twelve. And we'll be starting a K-five training throughout the district in homicidal threat assessment. An exploration of additional therapeutic support at the high school as well as the impact of our new bright program in the high school um will be a major priority for the remainder of this school year and continue into the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And as always, we continue to work very closely with the building administration and central office and the board as far as what is needed to support the students in special education. Um and next, I'd like to turn it over to Mrs. Forsberg and technology and data.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. So with a relatively small technology and data staff of ten, we are able to manage a state-of-the-art technology infrastructure that provides access to an ever-growing number of digital tools for over four thousand users and our families. This year, we are fully staffed with one technician per building, which has helped with faster service to our faculty, staff and families. The additional support also supports our phone needs, security camera system, new print management system, transportation support, as well as additional cybersecurity monitoring and day-to-day operations. There is very little that happens in our district that does not involve either the network or access to the internet during the school day or after school into the evening. Updates this year include finalizing our new phone system, additional cameras in our updated security camera system, a MacBook Air pilot for sixty of our teachers, piloting wireless casting technology in the classrooms and libraries. Our bandwidth was expanded recently and now includes an additional backup or redundant one gigabyte connection through a vendor. Both of our vendors have built-in DDoS monitoring, which is additional cybersecurity attack type monitoring. And our uptime this year is near one hundred percent. I couldn't think of any downtime, but others may have ideas that I forgot. The list of software on this slide and the next slide are just a sample of the many software tools that the technology and data department supports and manages to keep the district safely connected. Many different types of technology outside of the instructional software tools are supported by our team. This is a small sample of over one hundred fifty applications and software that are supported in the district. All of our software, extensions and apps are vetted through an approval and review process. The review process ensures smooth communication, budget planning and approving vendors against data privacy regulations. Some of the online tools were launched during the spring of twenty-twenty when we were in a remote environment and proved to be an essential part of the regular instructional or administrative day-to-day operations. With the increase in a variety of cyber attacks, malware attacks in our area nationally and internationally, we are continuing to upgrade our security fabric to include a host of tools with upgraded analytics, monitoring and protection. Additionally, the district contracted with vendors to conduct a series of penetration testing and vulnerability scans as well as consulting with experts for our cyber strategy planning. The priorities for twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four for our department, these are the financial priorities. Our team continues to support the entire district with any and all technical and data needs. As we look towards next year, we plan to maintain the one-to-one Chromebook plan that was expanded after twenty-twenty. In addition, specialized classroom spaces primarily at the high school and middle school that are up for a replacement in the replacement cycle will have newer technology to support their curriculum. Furthermore, teachers who have historically taught with a laptop, a Dell laptop, are now given a choice to renew with that laptop or a MacBook Air now that the costs are similar. We piloted wireless casting technology in a few classrooms and libraries this year with hopes to expand next year. While it's challenging to project out more than a couple of years in this field, a five-year plan will kick in next year to ensure that our relatively new systems we've put in place over the past four years are maintained as well as to plan for the future to refresh our wireless infrastructure, which also includes equipment updates and replacements. In the cybersecurity space, we will continue our partnerships with Putnam, Northern Westchester, BOSI's and Lyric to always stay updated and in compliance with data privacy laws as well. These partnerships also allow us to work with experts in the field while we develop a program in ensuring the NIST compliance.
So here are the numbers for the instructional portion of the budget. So it's broken down by section, by functional area. The total instruction portion of the budget increases as a result of our continued investment in teachers in the classroom environment. The total instruction investments will increase by over three point three million dollars and twenty-three, twenty-four, a five point one percent increase. We have captured the cost impact of all known retirements, potential new hires and replacements in the summary chart. We continue, we will continue to add new teaching and support positions in the budget to respond to any increases in enrollment or mandated services that may arise as a school year unfolds. So that is to say that the contingency positions that have been spoken about tonight are currently in these numbers. Once again, the budget presentation schedule for next week is the superintendent's budget presentation. We adopt on the tenth, budget hearing on May eighth and a budget vote on May sixteen. Thank you. Take any questions that you have.
Mr. Rosen and Ms. Forsberg, we'll invite you to the front of the room as well. Thank you.
Thank you. A little bit somber. Mike, you want to start with questions?
Yeah.
Actually, Ms. Forsberg, when did you join us?
2019, July 2019.
So four years ago. Wow. Yeah, and I have to say, the pace at which we have upgraded our technology and made improvements across the board that both assist our students and our faculty, as well as protect us, are just incredible. So thank you for that. I understand that comes with the cost, obviously, but it really, just the list of things that you've accomplished in the last couple of years is truly tremendous. So thank you for that. That given, that being said, you did mention something about teachers now having a choice, I believe, between Dells and a MacBook. And historically, those have been two very different costs. Can you talk about how that's come in line more?
Sure. So in the past couple of years, actually last year, the price of the MacBook Airs, so not the Pros, if you look at the cost between them, they are significantly different. And the Airs, there's now going to be three different tiers of MacBook Airs. Because the cost has come down, last year they were equivalent, or maybe within $20 of each other. So as we have a replacement cycle of about a quarter of our teachers annually, to spread it out, we had around 60 teachers take advantage of the MacBook Air pilot to make sure it worked in our environment before we would continue it into this year and beyond, and it's been a success.
Is there an advantage, is there an advantage to a MacBook as opposed to a Dell?
Well, I'm a MacBook user, so I would say yes, but in general, it depends who you ask, the teacher. I did ask them. They're a part of a group. We have a classroom for them. We met with them by Zoom, and many of them were, the level of experience they had with Macs ranged from a full user for a long time to never using one before. So we brought in a range of experiences, and their response was overwhelmingly, they just, they were able to teach with it in a more positive way.
I reviewed the data with Jen based on the feedback that our teachers provided, and the two recurring themes that I took away was network connectivity was less interrupted with a Mac compared to a PC. So there were, and when you're teaching a classroom of 20 or 25 students, you want network connectivity to be strong and uninterrupted. So that was the first piece. And then the efficiency with regard to the startup or the logging in on a PC versus a Mac, there was greater efficiency in operating the MacBook. And in a 42-minute class period, four minutes is 10% of your instructional time for that period, and that's a substantial, if we view four minutes in that regard, it's 10 minutes of instructional time, the efficiency every minute, every second of instructional time means a lot. And so those were the two takeaways, that I had greater reliability with regard to maintaining a network connection, achieving and maintaining a network connection, and then the efficiency because the login process was more streamlined. And Jen, I think you'd agree with that?
Yeah, I would agree with that, and I, I use all three. So I'll use a Chromebook. I've used, I want to maintain the same thing that our teachers and students are using. So I will consistently, I don't just use one. I want to make sure that I'm in tune with what everyone's using as well.
Questions?
Yeah, two questions. So my first one is from Ms. Forsberg. The cameras on the bus, is that also under the IT budget?
There's not an annual operating expense for the cameras on the bus, so in terms of the maintenance, IT will assist in some of the troubleshooting that happens, but with regard to the budget, there's not a specific, unless I'm incorrect on this, there's not a specific budgetary cost that we maintain for the actual cameras.
So in the transportation budget, there was some money put aside, I want to say around $26,000 for some, upgrading some of the cameras on the buses, the recorder piece of it. But as of right now, that's all that is required in terms of the buses on the cameras.
Yeah, I wasn't referring to the physical device, but more on the actual, the storage of the feed, et cetera. Where, where is that housed?
My budget, I don't have a budget line for the cameras on, on the buses. Our team, my technicians will help support, if needed, more troubleshooting, but it's not within my current budget.
Okay. And then my other question is on the instruction cost slide. So this, the second line, supervision, regular day, there's an increase of 173,000, and that's, so I know a year ago, we added the Crompon SRO position, so can we just remind everybody of like what, you know, how that, maybe we can get an update how that's going and plans for next year, et cetera?
So with regard to the evaluation of the program, thus far, anecdotally, it's been terrific. The, the more quantitative data are a little bit more challenging in year one because a large part of the success of the program will be measured anecdotally. So thus far, the relationships are being formed. The SRO has been in every classroom, has instructed multiple lessons in the classrooms, is present during arrival, dismissal, lunch periods. With regard to the budget item, though, that's certainly noteworthy because the anticipation is that, not that we'll be recommending additional SROs for this coming budget, yet there is an increase that shows the SRO at Crompon. There was an alternate funding source that was used. We had some federal monies that had come to the school district, and some of the, some of the budgeting was, was from sources outside of the district. So what we're doing, Lisa, you can correct.
And our contingencies, we use some of our contingencies because the SRO for Crompon wasn't specifically budgeted in those codes last year, so we pulled from some other areas. So it's appearing this year as a first-time budget amount, but it, we already budgeted or expended it this year.
And it was drawn from a different line in the budget, so we're just trying to make sure that our lines are accurately reflecting where the expenditures are coming from, and that's the genesis of that. However, there is not a proposal to add additional SROs for the coming school year at this time.
Thank you.
Sure. I have a question for Mr. Rosen. I see the, the student count for PPS has increased over 100 students from pre-pandemic to present day. Is that a result of the pandemic, or are there other factors that are responsible for that increase? Can you just talk a little bit more about why we're seeing an increase in the student count?
Sure. I think it's a combination of all of it. I don't think, you know, the pandemic probably is secondary to the number we talked about with students who are moving in. Students are coming with plans already in place that we have to continue. And I think the big thing we're seeing is a huge influx of our students who haven't even been here yet. So 40 students will come in who haven't been through the process in school, but have language delays, autism, all kinds of needs that need to be supported through special education. And there were almost 30 the year before and probably 27 the year before, so they are in the system getting services, and they move up through the grades. We also see a, the students who are not classified as they enter kindergarten getting, they'll probably need other services. And there are students who then come back through the CSE as the academics become more challenging. So those are some pieces. And we know we're also looking at some of the other pieces to support just all of our interventions in place and taking a close look at that as well. But I think just the number of students, a tribute to everyone sitting at this table, students are coming here and they will, they're getting supported because they get the support from everyone. So if, you know, you build it, they will come, and we're seeing that. We're, I don't know where the preschools, I don't know if there was houses available. I'm not 100% sure, but that's a huge number. 77, that's the biggest we've had, and it will probably be a cycle. Next year will probably go down to in the 50s again, just because so many are leaving now. In two years, it will probably be back into the 60s and 70s of kids getting support.
Great, thank you. Lisa?
Yeah, my question is for Ms. Amerling. You talked about the, the implementation of a computer science and digital fluency standards that has to be implemented by 2024. Can you explain what that is and what we're doing to comply?
Sure. And with us tonight, and he might want to jump in, because we do have our supervisor of STEM here, Mr. Chris Miller, who has been really instrumental in leading teams of teachers in all of our buildings to unpack the computer science digital fluency. In, in each of our buildings, we have teams, we have so much support from Ms. Forsberg, from digital tools. We're looking to see what is it that our students should be able to do developmentally appropriate at each level. In, in terms of computer sciences, we're looking to see what, what programs are, looking at coding opportunities for students, and really looking to build a long repertoire of expertise over their K-12 experience. If Mr. Miller does want to join in, he certainly knows this far greater than I do, but I can say that, Chris, do you want to join in a little bit? No?
We even have a seat for you.
Yeah. Thank you, Chris. Chris has been instrumental in leading the teams in each of the buildings, and I, we are ready. We're, we have a lot of summer work planned, and we have, we do know that we're going to be ready for full implementation next September.
We will be ready. That, that's for sure, we will be ready. So it started last summer. We met with part of Jen's team, with Alyssa, who's one of our tech teachers at the elementary school, Amanda Burns as well, and they worked with, with teachers. We met over the summer for four hours, really just doing a gap analysis to figure out with these brand-new standards, what are we currently doing now? And seeing if in fact, if we already do that, where do we do it? And we started to catalog and organize all of this information, and we realized that we were actually doing many of the things that the state is asking us to do, just naturally within our, within our classrooms. So the plan moving forward now is this summer is now we're going to find those gaps that we aren't covering, and where can we do that? How is that going to happen? And we'll meet with teachers again this summer, figure out those plans, be with library media specialists, be with all the people that would have an active role in this, so that we can kind of fill all those gaps and make sure we're meeting the needs of the state and our students within the classroom. Have a nice full school year, next year of trying all this out to making sure that we're good to go, and we still have one more summer to come back, come together, to perfect it, so that September of 2024, we're ready to go.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris.
I think this is a joint PPS curriculum question. Mike, you were saying that besides the students, like the preschool students with the serious needs, you're finding that there are academic needs that are being identified once they come into our schools. Is there anything we can or should be doing within our curriculum to put in more supports, classroom support, so maybe some of these students don't necessarily need to be classified, or we can get them what they need ahead of time? Is there anything that we're doing along those lines?
We, we do have a strong program in school currently. We do have an RTI system of supports. It, that does begin with all of our students being screened each year, three times a year. We use our benchmark assessments and FMP, our, you've probably heard Star Reading, Star Math, our DIBELS assessment, and we have teams of teachers, administrators, specialists, clinicians look to evaluate that data to see if there are any issues, one across the grade, and that's where we have, Ms. Chesser will work with our teachers, Mr. Miller will work with our teachers to fill in gaps in our curriculum that we can strengthen for everyone. They'll also evaluate the data for each class, and then they'll bring it right down to evaluating every single student's individualized data. Oftentimes, they will find that there are struggles that a student have, has that a teacher can really remedy within the classroom. So whether through small group instruction, guided reading, strategy group, they can really look to see, to monitor that specific skill within the general classroom. Students that struggle a little bit more would be recommended for a Tier Two service. Those services are really provided by a reading specialist or an AIS teacher. That could be a pull-out or a push-in program in reading or math, and it's usually a few times per week. If a student is not responding to that intervention or has greater needs, they'll be recommended for a Tier Three intervention, which really increases in frequency and duration. So for that, and it also adds a more specialized program, perhaps a specialized reading program. It's only after all of that is really not working with the team reconvened to say, does this warrant a evaluation or a referral to the CSE? So there is a lot that goes on daily in terms of looking to support our students through the RTI process. We are looking to really strengthen and expand that for next year. We're working on, we already started the work with our Lyric on really building data teams in all of the schools and really looking systematically at how we're looking at every single student's data and not letting an intervention continue if it's not having effect. Through that MTSS lens, we're also going to be looking at students who need additional behavioral supports, because they too, if you can't behave and you're having that struggle, you're not sitting and you're not learning. So we're really looking at developing all of the data teams, the MTSS teams in, throughout the district, to just strengthen our students academically, behaviorally, socially, emotionally.
So is the hope maybe to decrease maybe some of the referrals that we're getting?
That is definitely the goal. Yes.
I don't know. This is, the, the special ed is, it's sad. It's just sad that we have so many students with so many needs.
But on the other end of it, when it's moving up day and it's graduation day, it's the most amazing thing to see. And when they go off to college, it's an amazing thing to see.
And when you go to the Pioneer Games, it's an awesome place.
All of it. That's the positive side of it, because the kids do really well.
Yes, yes. Mike?
Oh, I'll go back to technology, one of my favorite subjects. I know in my own business, my own home, the increased use of technology, the number of devices that we use, I'm constantly looking at increasing bandwidth. So I'm just curious as to where we sit with that and how do you see that developing in the future?
Fortunately, we're in a really good position. One thing that happened post-COVID, when we were back into the remote learning, or we were in the environment, we were streaming, all the teachers were streaming from their classroom. We did increase the bandwidth at that time to meet the needs, and because we are not doing that type of, that level of streaming, we have more than enough bandwidth. We do look at it on a weekly basis, a daily basis, a monthly basis. There are spikes, but we are nowhere near maxing out, so we are very fortunate. And if there was a, a case or something happened where we needed to, we are set up to make a phone call to expand it. We have everything in place. There would be a cost to expand it, just like it would be in your home, but we have everything in place to do that. But currently, I don't have any concerns.
Good news. Thanks.
I'm good, thanks.
I'm good, thanks.
One more question. This is for Ms. Forsberg. With the teachers seemingly to prefer the Macs, is there any thought to switching the kids from a Chromebook to an iPad?
There would be, there would be a significant cost increase if we did that, I guess, at the elementary level. I don't know what, I'm assuming, I don't know what, what grade levels, but we do have the iPads in the kindergarten classrooms, and there was a consideration to switch them to Chromebooks, just based on ease of management of the device at that age level with ClassLink and some of the applications that they need. We haven't discussed moving, but there would be a significant cost increase if we were to move in that direction, K-5. The, the way that, with the teachers teaching on a Dell or a Mac, they're using the Chrome browser, so they can really work with either device, and some still do prefer the Dell over the Mac, some prefer the Mac over the Dell.
All right, thank you.
Can I have one more feel-good moment for a second?
Go ahead.
We had a presentation for our incoming preschoolers who are entering kindergarten. We had a panel discussion, we had a parent sitting on the panel, and she introduced herself, and it's, she's in a brand, the student's in a brand-new classroom over at Mohansik. And the way she spoke about all the supports that she has received in this district, it brought people to tears and reminded every single one of them why they do what they do. And it just resonates with everyone who was there that day, and it reminds us why we're here. And this is a kindergarten student who has a lot of needs and is getting a lot of support.
Your, your department does a phenomenal job. Everybody in your department comes from its leadership, but you guys do a phenomenal job, so we need to thank you for that every day. I have a question, I think, I guess it's for Deidra. With so much of our, the kids' work being on the screen, how do you manage screen time and non-screen time? Because that can be very much a lot of eye strain. Because that can be very much a lot of eye strain on kids.
It really is quite a balancing act, honestly. We heard from Ms. Forsberg about all of the different technology, about the digital tools that are available. We have a lot of access, and I think our teachers are constantly looking to ask the questions of why, what, and how. And it's a continual balancing act and trying to identify the purpose of what they have access to and balancing with some of the more traditional hands-on pencil and paper type of activities. We have teacher teams that are big. We have large teachers that meet by, teachers that meet by grade level. We have support from the tech department, from our supervisor for STEM. They work together to answer that, those questions and try to find that right balance. When we do look at some of the computer science and digital fluency standards, we see that they too focus on what is age and developmentally appropriate. And I think that's important for teachers to constantly ask, is this appropriate for the students in front of me? We see that they focus on things like pattern, sequencing, classifying. You don't have to pull a device or a screen to do that. You can do a lot more of the traditional types of activities. We want our students to have books in hand. We want them to have access to pencil and pens and paper. Our libraries are busy and bustling places. Our classroom libraries are absolutely beautiful and cover a wide variety of genres and topics of interest for our students. We will never want to give that up. But we do also have the responsibility of making sure that our students are ready for 21st century jobs. We want them to make sure that they have, they know how to safely access technology and to use it to create, to solve problems. So it is a continual balancing act from kindergarten all the way through to make sure that the teachers are answering the question as to the purpose of why they would put something on a device.
Thank you. More questions? Anybody?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. So next week, the budget is your final presentation? Okay. Okay, we are up to board discussion items. So the first discussion item is a vehicle purchase. I know Ron had sent an email regarding having to replace a vehicle in the district?
Yes.
And so we want to just, to hear a little bit more about what the plan was and if it's a possibility to look to more sustainable, eco-friendly type of?
Sure. We can, ultimately, it will come down to a philosophical discussion with regard to how we proceed. And if the board wants to continue the discussion next week, the board's meeting again, we might, we can continue the discussion. But ultimately, it comes down to a philosophical approach on hybrid vehicles, first all-electric vehicles, first gas vehicles. We're leaning toward a hybrid vehicle as opposed to a fully electric vehicle with, from an operational standpoint, just because of the infrastructure that we have and the limited use that the vehicle gets. One of our security vehicles was damaged in an accident beyond repair. So the cost of replacing the small mobile, which cannot be taken on a road, is comparable to the purchase of a hybrid SUV. And so we can, in fact, there, it's a matter of percentage points is the difference. So we can consider moving in that route or we can expend a greater amount of money to purchase an all-electric vehicle. But then the infrastructure of charging stations come into play, and generally, electric vehicles, the return on investment increases with the number of miles driven. Where you're not purchasing gasoline, you're using electric charge. This vehicle will not have that kind of mileage. Anyone who's come to the high school campus knows that there's a vehicle parked out front that's generally stationary throughout the course of the day. So the return on the investment is difficult to quantify because the number of miles being driven are such that in electric, the difference in layout price and then upgrading infrastructure to account for the charging may not result in a favorable return on that investment. However, it's a philosophical discussion that can be had. And it's not necessary that you have it tonight, but it was something that I wanted to just bring to your attention as we look to make a purchase to replace the vehicle that was damaged. Right now, we're down a vehicle, so you'll often see a regular car parked at the top of the driveway. If you come onto our campus, we're short a vehicle. And that's what we're hoping to solve with the purchase of either a hybrid or a fully electric vehicle. So we can come back and present to you costs, and we can, we can put a presentation together to share that information with you. However, the return on investment is going to be difficult to quantify because I don't believe the mobiles have odometers on them. I believe they have hours of how many hours they've been running, not so much miles they're driven. But I would, I would posit that the miles driven are minimal.
Okay, well, I guess before you present, it might be important to hear what the board is considering, what they would think is important for questions to be answered for a presentation like that. So does anybody have any thoughts about it?
So I guess my question would be, I'd need to understand what the use of the vehicle is. If it's strictly parked at the top of the driveway, we don't even need a vehicle for that. I mean, we could put a booth there, right? So what else does this vehicle need to do?
So that, well, we need to be able to move something in and out because at certain points during the day, we have high-through traffic and we need all three lanes. So during the instructional day, once our campus has completed the arrival process for middle school and high school, we go into a single lane of entrance. Whereas during the start of the day and the end of the day, all three lanes are used, the two entrance and the one exit lane. So we need something, but also the vehicle-
That could be a barrier, right? That doesn't have to be a vehicle that blocks the-
Correct.
That's my point. So what else does this vehicle need to do?
It does surveil the campus. It will traverse the campus. Generally, you have one person per vehicle. Right now, we don't have that. So there's someone in the vehicle. They'll then move their assignment elsewhere and they'll go work the, surveil the middle school entrance. Or they'll be on roaming duty, where they'll roam the parking lot, go up to the C lot. So right now, people are using their own vehicles, but the mileage, it's not that the mileage is zero, but the mileage is minimal when you're driving around on a high school campus. By having an SUV, it gives us the ability to go to another campus if we need to. We can use it in that capacity if we need to. The mobiles right now that we have, the security vehicles, don't have the option of putting them on the road. So what does it do? It surveils the campus from various points on the campus, whether, and I don't want to share too many stations of where we're located on the campus.
Understood.
But we're mobile and we are in different stations. So it's not the same person who stays in the same location for the seven-hour or eight-hour day that they're there. But they are mobile throughout the campus. But again, they're on a campus.
I, I would like to see just a broad overview of, you know, how many of these types of vehicles we have. And I think we have some electric ones, or maybe they're at end of life. So just a broad overview. I don't, you know, I don't think the conversation is just about replacing the one vehicle that's there. I think it's just a bigger picture, you know, as a district, where do we stand and what's our vision? That would be helpful.
Sure. Yeah, I agree with Rashmi, and just to piggyback a little bit off of that. You know, as far as what, you know, what costs are and a comparison of the different vehicles. And like Rashmi said, into the future, where do we project this and forecast, see this going? So just so we can get an idea of if we make the investment now, what are we looking at in the future if we decide to start to go with sustainable energy and future purchase?
So if the vehicle we were using was damaged in an accident, did we get an insurance payment that could finance another vehicle?
Not yet. So the vehicle collided with a person's, another vehicle. That claim has been paid. They're still working through the claim for our vehicle.
So we will get some sort of payment that could finance something else?
I don't think we're going to get, you know, much more than maybe $5,000, but still, it's something.
Okay, well, I guess I would need more information on that. I don't know why it would only be $5,000. But also, to Mike's point, if really the purpose of this vehicle is to be at the front, which is a great idea, and then move to various locations on campus, couldn't something like a golf cart serve the same purpose rather than a full vehicle?
Yes. So we can purchase another mobile. They have to be equipped with heat because we anticipate people will be out there during the winter months. They can't leave the vehicle. The cost of the electric mobile, and that was the genesis of this conversation, the cost of the mobile was in the mid-$30,000 range. And a hybrid SUV is in the mid-$30,000 range. And so I just began thinking, gee, this mobile is so limited in terms of what we can do with it. We can't take it off of the campus. It does charge on battery, and the batteries do deteriorate over time and resulting in a new battery, which is quite costly for us. And those have a different charging system than an electric vehicle. Those are a more simple plug-in battery charger that would not apply to an on-road vehicle. These are just more simple machines. So that's what got us thinking about, okay, we can spend mid-'30s for another one of those little mobiles that can seat maybe two people, similar to a golf cart, have some storage in the back. Or we can get an SUV that would give us more versatility and more options. Vehicle goes down on one of our other campuses. Perhaps I can take this to another campus and utilize it there. It just gives us a little bit more flexibility in use as opposed to now you're on the campus and you're going to remain on the campus with that vehicle.
So I understand the wanting to switch from the golf cart style, because that's what it is. It's a heated golf cart, to the SUV. But I think that we have discussed sustainability. We've discussed trying to make small steps to making changes. And I think this, I know it's not a school bus, but it is an option and a place where we can start to show that we are committed to this. When you talk about charging the electric vehicles, if you're charging a single vehicle, it's not the big charging station that sits over BJ's. It's a $3,000 or $4,000 charging station that goes into a garage and you plug the vehicle into that. So it's not-
But we are going to want to think bigger picture here, and one vehicle may turn into four vehicles or five as we replace the fleet.
We have to start somewhere. So maybe we don't start with the school bus because it's not in our purview this year. But I think that, in your presentation, we have to figure out where our starting point is to do this. Because I do- Because they're electric.
To me, just to be, the purchase of an individual vehicle is not what this is about, right? I mean, that's not even a board item. That's for you to decide what vehicle you need. But I think, to me, the bigger picture is, what does our vehicle fleet look like? And what do we want it to look like? And start to have that discussion. What you buy, you know, to park out front, I don't really care.
That's exactly-
But I need to, we do need to understand the bigger picture here of what our fleet looks like. Because the vehicle we're talking about replacing is an all-electric vehicle.
Right.
Right? So hybrid is in a different direction from where we already are. So I think we need to have a deeper understanding of where we are with everything and then talk about as a board how we want to make decisions going forward.
Absolutely, because our maintenance fleet does have to be replaced over the years. And as that does, what is the philosophy, how we go in?
And part of the conversation is, generally, when we make the investments in sustainability, there's a greater upfront cost. However, there's a return on investment over time. That's generally the model that's applied. I think a big part of this discussion, and we'll be sure to include this when we present, and next week's agenda may be a full agenda, but we'll certainly try to do, have a presentation at an upcoming meeting soon. The bigger conversation is if that return on investment is no longer there. So the upfront cost is higher, the infrastructure costs are higher, but there's no longer a return on investment that can offset the increased cost. I think that's where we talk about policy 6700 with purchasing and best value for the district. And those types of conversations are important to have.
But the other conversation is if we're replacing an electric vehicle that used to sit up at the top and it had to run to keep the heat on in the wintertime. Now you're going to put a hybrid up there, it's going to run and fumes are going to come out the back of it. So again, is that the direction we want to go in? And I think that's where we kind of have to figure out how we want to move forward.
I think what you may find also is that a hybrid vehicle is neither here or there. There's not much happening from a technology standpoint, you know, with innovation. But, you know, I think electric is, there's a lot more research going on and a lot more money being put in by the government to fund those, that research. So I think we might be able to piggyback some of that.
Okay. That was discussion number one. And our second discussion, and Ron started in his superintendent's update, is school volunteers. So I guess Rashmi, I'll start with you because you had started with some concerns about the policy?
Yeah, so the, I have no concerns with the policy itself. The policy was adopted in the February meeting, and the way it reads is straightforward. I think where the disconnect might be is actually how, or what happened from there. So for example, like, the policy doesn't say anything about volunteers requiring to apply for a job. So I'm not sure how the policy translated to that. And then there are just some questions on, that I have on the actual nuance of it, which is, so what is a volunteer? So yeah, it's okay, somebody may be a volunteer in the, in the building and they, you know, chair the, I don't know, garden committee, right? But then they come in maybe an hour in the summertime or whatever. But then other times, they're there in the building just to attend a meeting. So they're not there in a volunteer capacity the five times a year. So I think my suggestion would be we need to either rework the policy or we need to rework the implementation of the policy. And I'm, you know, and then I think I ran into the question of, I don't know what happened to OLAS? Like, did OLAS become frontline or? So there were just a few questions that I, that I had, and, you know, we got to do something.
Sure, sure. So whether it's OLAS or it's frontline, it still will have the feel that you're applying for something. So irrespective of the platform, it will feel that way. We generally use OLAS for exterior candidates, and someone applying from within, we'll use AppleTrack. AppleTrack is where all the internal postings get posted because the backend data that we're able to extract is put together in a way that's just more efficient and more effective for us to analyze. With regard to the volunteer application, it's a very scaled-down version of the application. On an employment application, there are many fields that are required. Education, references, all types of past history and certification information. For the volunteers, what we took away from our policy committee meeting, at least the administration took away from the policy committee meeting, was that we needed some kind of central repository to be able to house volunteers and know who was coming in and out of our building and making sure that all volunteers were properly vetted to work with our students. So if a volunteer is working for more than five days in a school district, theoretically, they should be fingerprinted. And they should go through a more stringent vetting process than the person who may come in once as a guest speaker or the presenter who's coming in one time to a class or the person who's volunteering once in a library. Now, the person may not know that they're volunteering five times that year. They volunteer for one event and then, hey, I'll sign up for this event. And then, oh, that event looks great too, and I'll sign up for that event. But with regard to, in general, the anticipation, if it's going to be more than five days, we ask people to sign up for the volunteer application within our AppleTrack system. And it asks for, first, an account, a name- And it asks for first, an account, a, a name, a email address, and a password. And then there's a question on the next page that asks if the individual is currently an employee of the district. At times, the answer would actually be yes. We do have teachers here who are members of the PTA who volunteer their time for the PTA. We, although we, we already have our teachers in the system. We ask for the address of the individual. We ask, now, the jobs are not broken out, so all of the positions are listed there. Volunteer is amongst all of the openings that we have in our district. So if somebody checks that, they would then be directed to a page that asks where they'll be volunteering. They would check the schools where they'd be volunteering. And then there are a series of attestations and board policies that the volunteer has to either attest to or review, if it's a board policy review. And some of the things that they're attesting to is not using tobacco products or alcohol or, or any other substances while on campus. Avoid being alone with students. Refrain from any physical interaction. Not leave children unsupervised. Sign in and out. So all, there, there are a series of attestations that the individual would be expected to sign off on. There's a confidentiality statement that we ask that the applicant review because they're going to be privy to some student information just being in their presence. There's an equal employment statement that we make. That's part of our application process. We ask for some demographic information, three demographic questions, and then two emergency contacts. And that's the extent of the application that the volunteer would, would complete. There's also the opportunity, if they wanted to upload any documents, they, they're welcome to. If they want to upload fingerprints or, or any other information that they feel would be relevant, they have the opportunity to do that if they wish. So we've really stripped down the, the application to make it streamlined. But this provides us with a repository to know, to know who's coming in to work with our students. And the principals ultimately make the determination on volunteers.
Right.
My understanding that if you work, I'm sorry Rashmi, that if it was, you were coming in and you're gonna just be a volunteer, like PTA volunteer, that you weren't gonna be fingerprinted, but you were gonna have to give your driver's license so that it could be run through the system. The fingerprinting goes to if you're a volunteer coach or-
Advisor.
Advisor of some sort. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no problem. So, yeah, so the fingerprinting is what occurs now. Just when you, any way to enter the building, everyone has to produce their ID. It gets scanned, it gets run through Raptor and all that, right? So it checks against, I think, some standard, you know, criminal and offender databases. But, but the roughly 15 pages or so that you went through, I don't think that that information is in the policy. Like it just, it sounds like just fill out an application form. And to me, I thought, all right, I would just sign in. Like that's the form that's there. I'm coming in for the library or, I don't know, whatever, to help on this decoration committee. And that's, that's my form. Because everything else is captured electronically from the license. So I think we need to take another look at the policy to, so that it's actually what, what we would like it to be. Or we have to look at the system and see, because I think we need to be very clear on where, where, on what they need to do and where the information that they're filling out goes and what happens with it. Who, who looks at it, is it, you know, who is it shared with, that kind of stuff. And then my other question was, you know, it's kind of like we're, we're almost at the end of third quarter. So from a timing standpoint, you know, I, I, I just don't want to cause more hardships in our buildings trying to retain and, you know, hold on to the volunteers that they have. Because it's, it's hard as such to find them. So if this is something that can be, you know, that we can maybe implement in the beginning of a school year and, you know, like put it, like make it well-known ahead, like over the summer and make it well-known, so it's coming. So when people sign up for things, like they know I gotta fill out, you know, these 15 pages of stuff or whatever it is that we need.
Sure. I mean, we can, if the policy committee is open to taking it up again, we can certainly take a look at this in committee. If committee's open to looking at it.
Yeah, I, I'm fine with looking at it again. I actually have, just if you could just clarify, Dr. Hatter. Regarding the fingerprinting, are they expected to do that on their own or do we do it for them? And then I have another question. Is there another tier or level of vetting for overnight trips?
We have asked volunteers who are advising, who are coaching teams or advising clubs, regardless of the club, regardless of the sport, to get fingerprinted on their own. So they have done that on their own. With regard to overnight trips, the vetting is generally similar to what we would do for a longer-term volunteer. It's rare that we have someone officially chaperoning a trip who's not an employee in some capacity here, whether it's by coach or through full-time status. We do, if there's any anticipation that they would be driving students, there's a prior authorization. There's copies of the licenses that, that are run in advance. So those are some of the additional safeguards that we put into place on overnight trips.
So I, I share a couple of concerns about the volunteer process and, you know, Rashmi touched on it. It's difficult to get people to volunteer their time, especially during a school day. You know, everyone's busy now. The world has changed. To put an extra step in for someone to have to apply to be a volunteer and complete this form, I think it, and, and sort through all of the other jobs, you know, seasonal helper, cleaners, all the other jobs. I think that's a, an arduous task to ask for someone you're just asking to give their time to. So i- if we are gonna go forward with this, I would ask that it be pulled from that. Make it a volunteer registration and provide the information there. I'm not, I'm not opposed to having a database of our volunteers. It's also helpful for when we need another volunteer to call on someone who's, who's in our database that, that we know that they're interested in doing this kind of thing. I don't know why we need their demographic information. I don't know why that's relevant at all. I don't think that should be on there. I don't think it's appropriate. And also, who, who is reviewing these things to make sure that it's completed properly? Are we, are we gonna, if it's an application, are we rejecting people? I don't, you know, I guess I'm not clear. You're not asking them to upload their driver's license, which will probably be helpful if we're gonna run them through the Raptor system and that when they walk in the door, that's when, I don't, I don't know at what point we do it. But to me, this doesn't really seem to serve a purpose that we need it to serve. And, you know, maybe that's something we can talk about in more detail on policy and come up with, with something that is either more conducive to encouraging volunteers to participate in our schools as well as provide the information that we really need.
So just to be clear, because when we were in policy and we were discussing the application, we discussed using the system we already had in place because that meant we didn't have to purchase another system for applications. We don't have any other systems for applications other than this AppleTrack or frontline, whatever you want to call it. So now you're, you want us to have another, look at another system for volunteers?
It's not what I want, right? It's, we're discussing this. I think that it's, I, I have been a volunteer in schools for many, many years. And to ask me to go in and fill out 17 pages, asking me my race, that's, that's a lot. You're asking a lot there, people. And to sort through all of the other jobs that are listed on, on the district website as posted opportunities, you're, you're asking, you're, you're putting people out. And I, and I, if it were me, I'd be like, you know what? Forget it. I'm not, I'm not gonna do it. It's not, it's not worth the time then. I'm just saying, take that into consideration.
Okay. Do you want to put it back on the policy agenda?
If it's okay with the committee, yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, I think we should.
Can I, can I just ask though, what, why does the policy need to be reviewed? It seems to me this is an implementation issue. The policy just says there's an application, right? I didn't read a specific-
There are aspects of the policy that speak to the number of times individuals come in to fill out an app, that they would be required to fill out an application. The applica-, and honestly, when we talk about the regulation, because we do discuss regulations, which is obviously how the policy is carried out, there seem to be some questions as to the content of the form. And I think it would be appropriate to have the policy committee have a conversation on what content would be most appropriate. The administration has determined that the content here is appropriate, but I think input from the policy committee would be helpful to us.
Okay.
Thank you.
So what happens now though? We have a policy on the books. Are we pulling it?
We're gonna continue to follow the board policy until the board policy is changed.
I love the policy adoption. Can I have a motion to approve the second reading and adoption of the following policies? 4334.1, high school credits for college courses. 5025, student sexual harassment and grievance procedures. 5425, automated external defibrillators. And 5470, missing children. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Business office, can I have a motion to approve the budget transfers listed below?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Gifts, grants, and donations. A motion to accept with gratitude the following gifts, grants, and donations at the high school. $5,000 grant from the First Robotics Organization for the purchase of robotics parts and two ping pong tables from Lucia and Tomiko Zuka for the Yorktown High School Ping Pong Club. And at Brookside, Ned's Mindset Mission Assembly through a donation from Brookside PTA.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We're up to board comments. Lisa?
So the First Lego League, I'm sitting here, thank God they gave me this pencil because I've been using it. But I didn't, when they handed it to me, you know, there's these little knickknacks in there that are, that are engraved and carved and the, the pencil is personalized. And I didn't, I'm looking at this, I didn't realize the kids made these. I mean, I, I don't know if you guys can see this, but these are these little things. And they, they're, they're so well-done. They're like professional. And the pencils, it's amazing. I just, kudos to everyone who's involved in that program. The parents, the kids, the administration, the staff. This is amazing. I'm, I'm so impressed.
These are 3D printed.
It's crazy.
Cheryl?
I just wanted to thank our staff for coming out tonight. I know it was a long meeting and we had a, a long budget to make up for our last week's canceled meeting. So thank you for everyone for hanging in there tonight and answering all of our questions. And secondly, I just wanted to talk, speak to our student recognition tonight. What a phenomenal group. In addition to the First Lego League, we had a group of seniors out here who are going to do great, great things. Our future is very bright and I am very proud to say, I, you know, I'm involved with the school district. I'm also the parent of a senior. And this is just such a, I know all of those students personally and they are just a wonderful, phenomenal group. So I'm glad we had them here and I'm very proud, very proud that they're part of our district.
Rashmi?
Oh yeah, great, great night tonight. I have a follow-up actually for Dr. Hatter. I saw, I think I wanted to tweet this week about the school lunch program for New York State. Would you have any more information on that?
Actually, I'm glad that you mentioned that. So there is overwhelming support in Albany. And this has been something that has meant a lot to me. It's meant a lot to our board. There is overwhelming support in Albany as the governor prepares the budget for the coming year for universal free school lunch. And there's $280 million that has been budgeted. And there is a push both in the Senate and the Assembly to fund school lunch. And that would be something that would be so welcome. It, it was here during COVID. It proved beneficial to our students. It proved beneficial to even families where making lunch can present a challenge, just schedules and demands. Where your child's being honored at a board meeting and now you have to go home and prepare lunch for the next day. There, there are so many benefits outside of the obvious of children getting a meal that, that's nutritious and, and healthy for them. So there is overwhelming support to the tune of about $280 million out of the Senate. The Assembly will, will wait to see what ultimately happens. But I'm pleased and encouraged to, and I've been in communication with some of our lawmakers in Albany to advocate for this effort. So I appreciate you mentioning this and, and I appreciate the support that the board has given to this because this is just one of those things that I think universally people think is the right thing to do for children.
Thank you for advocating. Thank you.
Mike?
No, I, I don't think I can add anything to the great comments that were made. I truly appreciate all of our staff for coming out tonight. I know it's been a long night. I don't want to make it much longer. And also to Lisa's office for putting together the budget, the presentation. So thank you for that.
Yes, I agree. Thank you to our staff. Lisa, thank you. It's your first budget with us. Yay. I just want to remind people that besides the, the election, the, the annual vote for the budget, there's also two board seats up. One of them is an empty seat right now from Anthony Delisandro. If anybody wants to run, please contact our district clerk. Also, if you are not registered to vote and you would like to be registered to vote, please contact Yvette and she can point you in the right direction to how to be registered to vote. We appreciate every vote that we get. That's it. So can I have a motion to, oh, public comment. Anybody else wishing to speak? No? Okay. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good night, everybody.